Oh, Austin. Austin?
Yes, sir.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll hit the thing when it's hits the number. A call to order the regular session agenda. Tuesday, May 27, 2025, 6:30 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Coliana?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kooliass?
Here.
Mr. DiDonato?
Here.
Mr. Banther?
Here.
Tonight, we're going to have our reflection. Pastor Guy Thompson is going to do the reflection. And then afterwards, we'll do this pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. O gracious God, our Father, we come unto you first and foremost to say thank you. Thank you for just being who you are. Thank you for our mayor. Thank you for our city manager, our commissioners, and our chiefs, and all of the employees and citizens of this great city. Continue to guide them with your wisdom as they lead this city to even greater heights. We welcome you into this meeting so that every word that we say and everything that we do will be pleasing and acceptable to you. May it be for goodwill and for all mankind as we work together to make this city a great city under you. We pray this prayer in your holy name as we all simply say, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, just a couple of points of order. We're going to, item 13 is being deferred to June 10. And the city manager has requested that I move items 17 and 18, which are the ordinances and resolutions. He would like those addressed immediately after the consent agenda. So we'll be doing that. Let's have public comments. Please line up if you are wish to speak. And public comments would be on anything that's not on the agenda tonight. So please state your name and your address, please.
Hello. Debbie McKinney, 1021 Rose Tree Lane. I just, I love the new website. I love it. It's great. He's very nice. But I'm having trouble with reading and understanding documents, so therefore I'm going to ask you guys a question. If somebody could give back to me, that would be awesome. Looking at the, referring to Airbnbs and verbos. I found out there's one on my street. And according to the maps that I'm looking at, it's not a place they're supposed to be. So I did a little more looking, and just in my neighborhood, there's 19 of them in the area that says they're not supposed to be. So I might be reading it wrong, but I don't believe I am. So if somebody could clarify what the rules are about Airbnbs and like verbos, under six weeks.
Thank you. City manager, do you want to? Debbie? The city manager's cards are there at the podium. So if you'd like to take one and reach out, he can answer your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any more public comments?
Piratilakis 514 Ashland Avenue. Yeah, you can take your potty break, Mike. Psalm 101. I will sing of your love and justice to you, Lord. I will sing praise. I will be careful to lead a blameless life. When will you come to me? I will walk in my house with blameless heart. I will set before my eyes no vile thing. The deeds of faithless men I hate. They will not cling to me. Men of perverse heart shall be far from me. I will have nothing to do with evil. Whoever slanders his neighbor in secret, him will I put to silence. Whoever has haughty eyes and a proud heart, him will I not endure. My eyes will be on the faithful in the land that they will dwell with me. He who walks as blameless will minister to me. No one who practices deceit will dwell in my house. No one who speaks falsely will stand in my presence. Every morning, I will put to silence all the wicked in the land, and I will cut off every evil doer from the city of the Lord. So, a couple of follow-up things from the meeting last two, two weeks ago. One, with regards to the fluoride debate. And the little Suncoast Beacon gave a real nice, again, Dental Association spin of this. Whenever you have to look at this in totality from a larger picture, it's not. Look at how our health system works. Is our mouth and our teeth not part of our body? But it's not included in health insurance. All y'all have health insurance, and if you want dental, you have to buy extra, just like in the private market. Medicare doesn't cover it. Medicaid does some to a limited amount. Why is that? Why is it that all the policies and legislation, dentists got paid separately, usually in cash or in barter, but never got insurance coverage? So if you really look back at the history, part of the reason there's been so much problems with dental decay is there's a large population that didn't have access to dental health, and they still don't. Now, about the meeting last week where y'all discussed the Heritage Preservation Board appeal. I don't know what's in you guys where you feel you have to make every decision and be in control of every piece of thing that goes through here. Renee gave you, and y'all trust your staff for most 95 to 99% of the stuff they tell you, gave you a perfect way out. Send it back to the Heritage Preservation Board, let them review it, let that gentleman re-present it. I don't know what the rush was that you needed to do it, then you still ended up delaying it. And then you could use it for a teaching and a learning and growing opportunity, because from that come, whenever you have a month of five Tuesdays, you can have a workshop and work with Heritage Preservation Board and maybe the Planning and Zoning Board and work about setting up guidelines and refining those processes. Instead of having the man come back and you have to do it, and if the next one comes up, nothing's been resolved through the Heritage Preservation Board. So I would recommend, instead of having that meeting on June 6, you advise the client that you decided for them to make that presentation to the next Heritage Preservation Board meeting. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good evening. Lori Weaver, 917 South Florida Avenue. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I would like to address the topic of time restrictions during these BOC meetings and share my past experience in an effort to compel the Commission to consider reducing the time limit for public speaking in an effort to streamline Commission meetings. I have heard repeatedly from residents that the reason they do not attend Commission meetings is due to their lengthy nature. I myself watch the Commission meetings utilizing the fast-forward feature on my TV remote to avoid listening to content which is not relevant to me. Some of you are aware that I served as a Commissioner in another municipality here in Florida. Our meetings allowed for the general public to offer commentary and limited that commentary to two minutes per podium visit. This was managed utilizing a written request system by which any citizen could submit a card to the city clerk before or during the meeting and request an opportunity to speak on a specific agenda item. When that agenda item was up for discussion, the clerk introduced their resident, who subsequently allowed two minutes to address the council. There was a countdown clock for monitoring time on the podium. Two minutes was plenty of time for anyone who had prepared a thoughtful presentation. Prior to adjournment, general comments were allowed utilizing the same request card procedure. This procedure allowed for the agenda items to be cleared by city leaders in a timely fashion while also allowing for residents input. This system never failed us, allowed us to address every agenda item thoroughly and serve the public's interest to participate. While my presentation tonight was scripted, it was intentional and purposeful in order to reflect that it is possible to collect one's thoughts and make a thoughtful presentation in under two minutes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else? Austin, do we have any remote?
There are no online comments.
City clerk? Do we have? Can you turn your microphone on?
We have one comment that came through online, and I'll go ahead and read it. It's from Harold Joe, 322 East Lime Street, Turpin Springs, Florida. I'm very disturbed about this organization. I am a parent. I and a parent were told lies. There was a leasing deposit made for this center on 3/13/2025 to the date of 6/7/2025. Plan was to have a teen dance slash show slash fundraiser. However, as of yesterday, three men came together in order to cancel the event we had scheduled for kids. More info will be coming out soon.
Thank you. Okay, with no further comments, let's go to, again, item seven, excuse me, I'm sorry, let's, let me, I'm sorry, let's go through the consent agenda. Item one, attorney fees, Eunice Salzman and Johnson Jackson. Item two, grounds maintenance service. Number three, sidewalk improvement program. Number four, annual street resurfacing. Number five, Sunset Beach Park pavilions. And number six, shade and shelter services. Does any Commissioner wish to pull any of the consent agenda items?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull the item three, sidewalk improvement program.
Okay, item three. Five. And Vice Mayor wants to pull five? Anyone else? So let's, let's vote on items one, two, four, and six. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So move.
With any, no further comments, go to roll call. Public comments? Not on, not on consent agenda.
You don't have to on consent agenda.
Let's go to roll call, please.
Yes.
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 We will go to public comment on the pulled, on the pulled item. Okay. Item number three, Commissioner Kooliass?
Yes, I see that we have the sidewalk improvement fund. We are, I see we have some projects that are listed to go this year, although I would, I don't want to support the Seabreeze portion at this time. The amount of money for that project for that area, I think, can be used towards other areas in the downtown urban Union Academy area where there's a lot of walkability and where it needs to be. And at least for now, as we fill in, so I'd like to get the support from the rest of the board and if staff needs to help, just give a little update on that about switching, taking off the Seabreeze and adding a lot of those projects that would fit within the budget.
Let's go to Commissioner comments. I'll go first. I have no opposition to your, your amendment. I would support it. Thank you. Commissioner Banther?
I have no opposition, but I think we do need some clarity asked in case we get calls from residents on Seabreeze on why we did this, but I'm not opposed to it.
I'll, we'll call on the city manager last and let him.
Thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I would just echo what Commissioner Banther just said. I think that, I'm not opposed to changing, I just want to make sure everybody understands the difference. Some of them may think that they're getting what they may not get.
And Vice Mayor?
So I'm not opposed to it as well. My question is, as Commissioner Banther said, were there comments made by some of the residents there at all? Because there's virtually no sidewalk on, you know, on that area over there.
City manager?
Yeah, I think if, when you look at the dollar amounts, we could probably do, Bob, we said like 11 smaller projects and get them completed.
Yeah, we could fit in about 11 Union Academy area projects for the, if we swap out the Seabreeze. And I would say that, you know, the next year's program for sidewalk priorities is coming in the next budget cycle. So the Seabreeze project could go right to the top of that for the next fiscal year. If the board so desired.
Is there any public comment on?
I don't think so.
Let's, yeah, let's, any public comment on this item?
Piratilakis 514. If you look at the traffic, that would be affected. Doing 11 projects in the Union Academy neighborhood and in this downtown area, there's more foot traffic, I believe, than what goes on out at Seabreeze. So I would highly recommend that you support Commissioner Kooliass's recommendation and, and follow through on solving some of those easier projects, because if you can support 11 streets, you're going to get a lot more better feedback than just one street. And as Bob said, you can put it in for your next budget and maybe portion it out, maybe a third, a third, a third over three years. You know, y'all can figure that out, but thank you for that suggestion, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you. Any other further comments? Austin?
There are no hand raised at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Entertain a motion. Commissioner Kooliass, do you want to go ahead and make that motion?
Okay, and I make the motion to approve Agenda Item Three, Sidewalk Improvement Program with the amendment of removing the 1610 Seabreeze to 1674 Seabreeze improvement and including at the direction of staff, the projects listed in the downtown and the Union Academy that fit within the budget.
If there's no further comment, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. DiDonato?
Yes.
Mr. Kooliass?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Coliana?
Yes.
Item number five, Vice Mayor?
So question one, we have these pavilions at Sunset Beach. Is any of this reimbursable through the FEMA destruction from Hurricane Malene or Milton?
Yes, it is.
And how much?
Yes. The total contract price is $268,000, up to $190,000 is reimbursable.
We're out about $70,000, something like that.
Correct, but I'll also add that we are adding one extra, one new pavilion for that price. So that 70,000 includes one brand new pavilion.
Gotcha. So we couldn't tell FEMA that that was their imaginary?
No, no ghost pavilions that I'm aware of.
Sorry, this is just me, what can I say? The other thing, later in the, in the agenda, I have something coming up, so I just wanted people on the board to remember about this $268,000 that we're going to be spending, whether it's FEMA or it's us. We're the ones making the investment in Sunset Beach, and I'll continue my comments afterwards. So thank you.
Okay, is there any further Commissioner comments on this item?
Yes, Mayor. Bob, just wanted to ask, you know how the long pavilion that was closest to the shore got wiped away? It was about three, three of them, really just one long one? Do we have any plans to try to bring something back? Because when I went by this Memorial Day weekend, I noticed that a lot of people are congregating, a lot of people that are on that side, they're congregating underneath the stage pavilion, because, and you know, of course, some people are bringing them tents, but just out of curiosity, is there maybe a consideration to bring a larger shelter back there or something?
Are you talking about the band performance pavilion?
The band performance is fine. It's just a lot of people are underneath that now since there's not another shelter there, or that one that was three, three of them long that was once there.
Next to the boat ramp, all right. I'm not sure, I'll have to look into that. I'll just tell you that this project, it includes four of the 16 by 24, 24-foot shelters, and then one 45 by 30-foot, one of the bigger ones. Okay. And that's the one? Okay, all right, thank you. I've been told that's the one, so there, I looked into it. Thanks, Tony.
Any other Commissioner comments on this item? Let's go to a public comment. Any public comments on this item?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further comments, I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So move.
Okay, if there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Mr. DiDonato?
Yes.
Mr. Kooliass?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now we're going to move item 17 up, and that is Ordinance 2025-06. This is a second reading, the Land Development Code Amendment. Renee?
May I?
Do you have to read it? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ordinance 2025-06, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Conference of Zoning and Land Development Code, Article 2, District Regulations, Section 25.12, HB Highway Business District, providing for codification, conflicts, severability, correction of Scrivener's error, construction, publication, and effective date. That is Ordinance 2025-06, read by title only on second reading, prior publication, April 2, 2025, and May 14, 2025.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. This is second reading of this ordinance. In a nutshell, it adds the schools of general education as a conditional use in the highway business district. There's no new information added to the file, and there's been no additional public correspondence on this. correspondence on this.
Let's go down, uh, I have no questions of staff. Commissioner Banther, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Commissioner D. Donato?
No.
Commissioner Kulyas?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay, let's go to public comment. Any public comment on this item? Austin?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, let's, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Second.
Is there any further, uh, discussion on this item? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kulyas?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Let's go to item number eighteen, resolution 2025 dash 43, adoption of the Pinellas County local mitigation strategy.
Resolution 2025 43, a resolution by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, adopting the Pinellas County local mitigation strategy.
Ms. Vincent?
Uh, thank you. This is resolution 2025 dash 43. This is adopting the required, uh, five-year update to the 2025 Pinellas County local mitigation strategy. This is an all hazards mitigation plan that the county and all municipalities within the county participate in. Um, this is about the fifth, uh, fourth or fifth, you know, five-year update to this. Um, we are required to have this, uh, this plan. It, it does ensure, um, the ability for municipalities in the county to apply and receive, uh, hazard mitigation grants. Um, it supports our flood plain management, uh, plan. It is, uh, and required for our participation in the community rating system. Um, the Florida Department, Division of Emergency Management has reviewed the plan update, um, and has, uh, found it compliant with all the required standards. Uh, Pinellas County has already adopted the plan and each individual municipality also has to adopt the plan in order to, um, be wrapped into the, the benefits of that plan. So, uh, that, this is, um, being presented to you tonight. Um, I can answer any questions. I also have, um, Megan Araya, um, who sits on the local mitigation strategy, um, working group, uh, and is a little more in-depth familiar with this than I am at this point, but we're recommending approval.
So let's go to Commissioner, uh, questions. Commissioner Banther, do you have any questions of staff? Commissioner D. Donato?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Kulyas?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor?
No, sir.
Uh, is there any public comment? Austin?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any Commissioner comments? If not, let's go to roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Coliana?
Yes.
Okay, so that takes care of, uh, ordinance and resolutions. Let's now move to business items of number seven, request for time change to Night of the Islands event on June 7th, 2025 from 5:00 to 10:00 PM, changing that to 6:00 to 11:00 PM. City, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the commission previously approved this event, 5:00 to 10:00, and the event organizers have requested, uh, they say the more historical hours were 6:00 to 11:00, particularly because of the heat. Uh, we don't feel, we don't feel people are going to show up until probably closer to 7:00, so, uh, asking to change those hours, but shifted by one hour.
Do any Commissioners have any opposition to this? Okay, public comment?
Deep Mimasakis, 204 North Florida Avenue. Um, we also wanted to ask for assistance in the police and the waste management, uh, if the city could help us out. Previously, we would get grants to put these on. Now the restaurants and the other businesses are paying out of pocket for this, so if we could have some assistance with that. And then also I have two banners, one for Tarpon Avenue 19 and one for Dotecanese, but there's currently an arts and crafts banner there, so I don't know who I give it to or do I take it down? So I'm just looking for assistance and guidance there.
Why don't we, uh, why don't you take the city manager's card?
Okay.
Yeah, we've been in communication.
Yeah, would you reach out to him and, and you guys can coordinate that and it can be brought back to us?
Awesome.
For something to vote on, on that item. Thank you very much. Any other, uh, public comments?
Uh, Mr. Mimasakis, can you hold on a second? Oh, can I? Yeah. You, you asked for support and funds. Do you have any numbers you're talking about? I mean, you just, you just said without providing anything, sir.
Yeah, so the, uh, police, it's, uh, $50 an hour for the police and 35 an hour for the waste management. And, uh, we need four police an hour and two waste management, so it's, uh, comes out to 1,600 for the police and 560 for the waste management.
Okay. Uh, again, work, work with him, we'll, we'll, um, and we'll put it on, we'll put it on the agenda on, on the next agenda.
I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for allowing this.
Uh, thank you.
Okay, um, I think I went to public, that's the only public comment I talked to.
We can't have it.
I want to make sure if we go to Austin.
No, we can't have it on the next agenda. It's June 7th.
Oh, it'll be after the?
Yeah, so I don't know if, just, are you guys interested in giving them a little support with funds for the things they requested? If not? Just let it go then, they'll come up.
Well, what, why don't we, um, let's vote on the time change and then if you'd like to make a motion on, on the other, we'll entertain that as well.
Okay.
So any, any, uh, again, any opposition to the time change? If not, roll call?
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion?
I think I did the motion, somebody seconded it.
I thought it got seconded, yeah. Yeah. Roll call, please.
A second.
Was, was it me? It can be me if you want it to be. Fine, second.
Yeah, Commissioner Banther.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. D. Donato?
Yes.
Mr. Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Coliana?
Yes. Commissioner Kulyas? Uh, knowing, he'd mentioned about $2,100 in funds, you know, I'm not there to, uh, you know, would the board be interested in, in lending or, you know, helping $800 towards that, that cause, towards their, about $2,100 to help them start off? It's really a, you know, startup thing and just want to see something good come out of this Night at the Islands for, for the community.
Well, I think what we could do is we, couldn't we, we just waive the police fee?
It's even better.
Why don't you just do that? And make, why don't you make your motion for that?
I'll make a motion to waive the police fee for the Night at the Islands event.
Second. Is there any, um, any public comment on this?
There are no hands raised online.
Is there, um, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Banther?
No.
Commissioner D. Donato?
No.
Commissioner Kulyas?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Let's go to, let, we have, we have the, you had made the motion, it's been seconded, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. D. Donato?
Yes.
Mr. Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Coliana?
Yes.
That worked nice. How about, um, let's go to business item eight. Um, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This, this item came up today, the reason we amended it so late. And just, uh, Rusty Belly is celebrating your anniversary, I believe it's their 20th anniversary, and just want to close a segment of the street right in front of the restaurant. And, uh, so staff recommends approval.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of the City Manager in regards to this item? Let's go to public comment. Austin?
There are no online comments.
I'd like to entertain a motion, uh, to approve item eight.
So moved.
Second. If no further comment, roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. D. Donato?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Vice?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Let's go to number nine, award file, uh, 250172, Lime and Huey Lift Station Rehabilitation Services, Mr. Keiger?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Thomas Keiger, Public Services Director. Um, today we've brought an item for you, uh, requesting approval to execute a contract with, uh, TLC Diversified for the construction of a new lift station, uh, to replace the existing Lime and Huey sanitary sewer, uh, lift station. Um, this is over, you know, on the intersection of Lime and Huey, as you might imagine, and the existing lift station is, uh, aged, it's, uh, below capacity, it's not meeting its current level, uh, its required level of service and it requires replacement. I'll also, I'm also kind of pleased to report that this is the last project from our CIP that was sort of a carryover from a few years ago. We've had the last couple of years have been sort of like catch-up years to do with the inflation in the construction industry and, uh, get through some of our, trying to find creative ways to finance some of these projects and execute them. And, uh, this is a good example of that. So we're going to be, uh, completing this project with about 1.5 million dollars in, uh, impact fees from the sewer impact fee fund, uh, to reduce the burden of the project onto the water sewer enterprise, uh, fund, which is financially beneficial for the utility. And, uh, we've also worked quite a bit with procurement to find some economical ways to deliver this project through piggyback contract with, uh, Pinellas County. Um, other contract options that we were looking at ranged up to 2.1 million dollars. Uh, this procurement method will deliver the, the quoted price is a little over 1.5 million dollars and we do have a 10% contingency just in the event of like unforeseen construction conditions as you, sometimes happen when you start digging up old pipes. So, uh, with that, we're recommending approval and I'd be very happy to entertain any questions.
Commissioner Banther, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Commissioner D. Donato?
No.
Commissioner Kulyas?
No.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Why is, uh, Pinellas County involved in this part?
Uh, Pinellas County is going to, is not, is going to be not involved in the construction. What we're doing is we're, uh, many of the local utilities will, uh, issue contracts for a variety of different light items for repairs and rehab of different, you know, roads and streets or stormwater or utilities. And, uh, we found that they have a contract with our preferred contractor that we do work with under the city and, uh, but their unit rates were more beneficial for this particular project. So we're going to be using their contract to determine the unit rates and we'll be incorporating all those contract terms in, but, uh, we will be executing the, the project internally, uh, with utilities, project admin staff. Um, so the county, the county is only involved in so much as they're allowing us to piggyback their contract.
So why are the, um, Pinellas County, the people that have signed the contract and we did not?
No, you're looking at their prior, their agreement. That's what got us the piggyback ability. It's their agreement.
So we have our own contract with this contractor?
Yes, sir.
See a lot of shaking heads. That's what I was trying to clarify, because when I was reading it, it didn't, it wasn't specific, um, to that. And, you know, I know they were giving us money, they were giving us 900,000 towards it?
The, uh, the county?
Well, who's, who's donating the, subsidizing the 900,000?
The city will be paying for this from city water and sewer impact fees and, uh, that is, uh, something that we had an update.
Right, but it's our 900,000 from our impact fees or is it 900,000 from Pinellas County's impact fees?
City sewer impact fees and it'll actually be 1.5 million. We've had some updates.
1.5 is the total amount, but the 900,000 is from the impact fees, city impact fees?
Uh, yes, we had a late addendum, uh, thing, uh, on the board materials, didn't quite make it in the agenda. Um, the, we've worked with finance, the 900,000 has been increased to 1.5 million out of city sewer impact fees that were collected by the city.
Okay, because like I said, when I read it, it was a little bit, I, I just didn't know whose money that was, um, because I want to be, make sure that we're in full control of this contract's fund.
Well, we will be in full control of the project. The original, uh, adopted CIP and rate plan called for the anticipated fund balance of, of $900,000, which was pretty much all we had in, we were projected to have at this time in sewer impact fees. Uh, we worked with finance, our fund balance on the sewer impact fee is a little bit higher, so we're able to increase the sewer fee, the sewer impact fee contribution, the project up to 1.5 million, which should cover almost all of the project. And, uh, that will allow us to not take as much money from the water sewer enterprise fund balance to execute the contract. But it's all city dollars and it's all city execution.
You, you've answered the question. I thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Is there any public, uh, questions or comments regarding this matter? Okay, if not, uh, Austin?
There are no online comments.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item nine.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any further comments? If not, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr.? Yes.
Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Coliana?
Yes.
Item number 10, award file, uh, 250071, um, request for proposal branding and marketing professional services. Ms. Lewis?
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Commissioners. Um, Janine Lewis, Procurement Services Director. Um, the item before you is the city issued request for proposals for the branding and marketing professional services firm. This is to assist the city in developing a brand identity and a comprehensive marketing strategy for Tarpon Springs. The scope of the work includes creating a unified brand platform and marketing specifically focused on the downtown Tarpon Springs and CRA areas. This will involve designing brand elements for logos downtown, um, for the Community Redevelopment Agency, the CRA agencies and various city department materials, both working, um, current and prospective special events where we'll get a brand created and then other events around town can market off the brand and kind of incorporate it into a version of their own. The city received 18 submissions. We narrowed it down to a short list of five submissions where one had dropped out and in the end, the staff is recommending 365 total, uh, degree, total marketing as the firm, um, most highly qualified. They demonstrated a strong grasp of putting the analysis together and bringing in the community and the staff to be able to reach an agreement on a brand. And we're very, um, how should I say, we're very excited to, um, present this project to you. For that, I'll leave it to questions.
Okay, let me go first on the questions. Um, I see that it's on this agenda and it's also on the CRA agenda on the next meeting following this. Uh, can you explain?
Yes, so because we're using funds from the CRA, the Community Redevelopment Agency, it's required to be approved by both boards.
Okay, thank you.
There'll be some general fund and some CRA funds.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Banther, do you have any questions?[1612.21]
No, sir.
Commissioner Di Donato?
No.
Commissioner Coolas?
Uh, no.
Vice Mayor?
I do, but I'm going to hold it for the second part.
Okay. Any public comments?
Here to Lex 514 Ashland Avenue. As Janine said, it's predominantly for the downtown area, the CRA district, which I understand the need to kind of focus taking each CRA funds, but when I look through 365's proposal, if you go to page 45 where it shows the breakdown of the costs before I get to that part. Tarpon is more than just the downtown. If you drive to Brooksville or Dade City or Mount Door, they all have, they're all working on fixing up historic downtowns. What makes Tarpon unique? And that's what they're going to try to find out. They're going to look at our previous branding. We have a branding. The sponger helmet, that's what you give away on. That's been our brand. And for me to see you spend money, not that I have a problem with that, but just on downtown and not looking at the city as a whole is where I have an issue. We market the sponge docks, come to Greece in Florida. Well, will that be part of this? I don't know. And then I've been preaching to y'all for years about ecotourism. Are we broadcasting or saying what beautiful parks and beaches we have? I don't see that in their proposal. Now back to page 45, if you look, there's a section there about doing a video, a promotional video and some additional videos and digital social media stuff. There's about $12,000 there. One, we've produced videos ourselves before. I don't know why we have to go out and spend money to a contractor to produce a video or maybe work with San P College with their video department and do a partnership with them. But what this also brings me to is the neglect of certain resources we already have for our city benefit. One, again, Chief Young can tell you 1610 on the AM dial, loop sounds. We're missing an opportunity to reach people with things. People still do use radios. If you added, increased your broadcast signal, and then if you go to the FCC and ask them for a dual license to have an FM broadcast channel, you can reach further out. We have a TV channel on Spectrum at 641. I don't know the others. I'm going to tell you something that's interesting. You may want to look into your contract with Spectrum. In my house, I have a TV in a cable box, the old style in the kitchen. And in the living room, I do the streaming. On the cable box, I can get 637, which is the Pinellas County channel, and I can get channel 641, which is the city channel. But if you stream Spectrum, you don't get those channels. So I called up one evening and I said, hey, I'm watching a meeting. I go to sit in the living room. The channel's not there. Well, in the streaming, there's different channels available. Wait a second, that's a public access channel. We have a right to have that broadcast. So all those people out there who no longer are using cable boxes and are streaming with Spectrum or maybe Knowledgey or Wow or whatever, you maybe want to check, but they're not getting your broadcasts. So unless you do like the lady did, go to YouTube and watch it later, you're out. So I just wanted to bring that up to your attention because if I remember when we set up these contracts, they're obligated to provide a public access channel. And they're not doing it to half of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Come do that.
Good evening, Susan Swenson, 327 Manity Lane. I am both a resident of this town and a business owner of this town. And I too, I was included and thankful to the people for including me in a meeting today with consultants with respect to what we feel is needed in downtown and on the sponge docks. And personally, I am also tired of hearing downtown and the sponge docks. I do go downtown. I am a frequent buyer in the downtown area and I go to the sponge docks. And mostly when I have relatives visiting or people visiting from other towns. But as we know, and a lot of this is from Main Street, a city corridor is also known as a development corridor. It is critical for economic development and improving accessibility. They enhance connectivity between parts of the city. By providing safe, attractive corridors, they can improve the quality of life for residents. We can improve walkability. People may park even further because these roads are then safer. We attract investments and now we redefine inclusivity. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Austin?
There are no online comments.
Thank you. The city manager wants to make a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on the few points. We, our PIO marketing specialist person will be working with the radio and TV stations that we have to work on content for those. But also this branding effort, one of the reasons it's paid out of the two funds is because it will have a citywide impact. So what often comes out of these is a brand for the whole city. And downtown is a piece of that, as will be other areas such as the docks and Greektown and the Fruit Bowl and Union Academy and the Alt 19 corridor. So there'll be sort of sub-districts and sub-brands that'll all tie together into a unified look for the city. So including they'll offer us a new city seal if we choose to accept it. So there'll be a whole palette of things, a new look. So that's why we're paying for it with the general fund. It'll have citywide impact in the CRA for the downtown portion of that. That, it is going to be impactful to the entire community and look at everything Tarpon Springs has to offer.
City manager, can I ask the city manager one question, Mayor?
Sure.
I see, so this price for around the 66,000, that's for the actual brand logo design, I suppose? Because I see we have in the backup, the social media like support too.
They're going to provide a marketing plan, a guidance for us. So we'll have a position on staff by then. They can take that ball and run with it and just going to lay it all out for us and really be a toolbox for us to use going forward. We can either retain them in the future or take the ball and run.
Perfect. Thank you, city manager. Any questions of the city manager? Okay, let's go to, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item number 10, award request for proposal. And then we can have.
So moved.
Okay, so now let's go to commission discussion. I, you know, this, it's exciting to have a new, fresh approach to our marketing. And like the city manager says, we're going to be marketing the entire city. You know, whoever comes to the sponge docks is hopefully going to go downtown as well and downtown to the sponge docks as well. You know, obviously at some point, our big, it's, you know, no secret that our, one of our big plans is actually, you know, is a parking garage to have, to really be the impetus to expand our, our commercial areas. And like Susan said, you know, we're, we're going to head, you know, down Pinellas as well and and also the Safford Avenue and it's, you know, all part of that. So we start with the branding. I think it's important. And so I'm going to be in support of this. Commissioner Banther?
Uh, no comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Di Donato?
No comments. Further comments?
Commissioner Coolas?
No comments.
Vice Mayor?
They say if it isn't broken, don't fix it. But I will tell you that other than the fact I was in Tampa Airport, I did waiting for my luggage, I did see the Come to Tarpon. I did see a lot of advertisement. But there's nothing wrong with having a branding out there for new and exciting ways to brand. We always are looking for new ways to get younger people. I was at the docks on Friday night and it was kind of quiet. I'll be honest with you. So I am in support of having a new, whether I'm going to agree with the branding or not, or whether we're going to agree with the branding or not. It just, there's nothing wrong for the, to me as a city of this magnitude, for us to have, spend this amount of money to get ideas. Marketing is not my expertise. So I know that we have ways and means to make the city better than we found it and that's what I'm looking to do. So I'm encouraging, I'm encouraged by the fact that we'll have outside eyes to look at it and we'll decide whether it's something we want to do or we don't want to do. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. If there's no further comment, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
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 Yes. Item 11, appointments to the Heritage Preservation Board. Acting City Clerk?
So as in your backup, you'll notice.
Excuse me, are you, is it turned on?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yeah, just put it close to your mouth.
So in your backup, you'll notice that there is two positions open that we're going to be voting for tonight due to the resignation of Ms. Denoff and Ms. Ryan, who currently, her term has ended, but at the end of this month, but she does not want to continue on the board. And we also have Ms. Kaplan, who is a current alternate, would like to be moved up. And also Mr. Sprecher would like to serve another term on the board. So your items will be to reappoint if you choose Mr. Sprecher to another four-year term. And then appoint, you can move the current alternate up as a regular member and then appoint from the list, Mr. Cardenya as a regular member as well.
Okay.
That's before you tonight.
Would any commissioner like to propose a motion on this?
I will, if you. So I would like to reappoint Mr. Sprecher. I want to move up Rita Kaplan to, from alternate to permanent. And I would like to make Hector, I don't have his last name here, as the alternate.
Or as he's. Be a regular member.
He'd be a regular, I'm sorry. So that, so we'd have then a full regular board.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any comments? Well, let's go to public comments on this. Any public comments on this? Austin?
There are no online comments.
Okay, I, Commissioner Banther, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Commissioner Di Donato?
No.
Commissioner Coolas?
No.
Vice Mayor?
Nope.
Let's go to roll call, please.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. Di Donato?
Yes.
Mr. Coolas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianus?
Yes.
Number 12, appointments to the Planning and Zoning Board. Acting City Clerk?
So thank you, Mayor. As you know, Ms. Franzese has resigned from the Planning and Zoning Board. And we have contacted, Ms. Weaver was contacted and she would like to be considered as a regular member. So before you, we can move the alternate member, Ms. Weaver, to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Franzese. And that term went in October 1, 2026. And she would be eligible for reappointment at that time. And appoint someone from the list below. If you'd like, I can go through those. Or you leave Ms. Weaver as an alternate and appoint from the list. So your options are one or two.
Does anybody have, want to make a motion on this?
I do. I will be considering, I'll make a motion to move Lori up from an alternate to a permanent and Matthew Collins to an alternate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is, let's go to public comment, then we'll come back. Public comments? Austin?
There are no online comments.
Is there any commissioner comments on this? Okay, let's go to roll call, please.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Mr. Coolas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianus?
Yes. Okay, let's go to item number 14, discussion and direction on Rotary Park request for Boys and Girls Club parking lot. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is brought for you today. We do have someone from the Rotary Club to present to renew a lease that's been in place since 1985. In addition, with an additional request for funds.
Okay. So we don't have, we'd like to make a presentation? Okay.
Good evening, honorable members of the Tarpon Springs Board of Commissioners, distinguished guests and residents of Tarpon Springs. My name is Rich Lundall and I own a business in Tarpon Springs located on 22 North Safford Avenue. I stand before you tonight as a Rotary Club member and the project manager for the Harold Haftell Beautification Project, completed this past February, joined by over 100 members of the community and our mayor at the time, Mr. Coolas, who presided over the ribbon cutting. I'm flanked by Milton Smith, current president of the Rotary Club of Tarpon Springs, and Freddie Williams, chief executive officer of the Greater Tampa Bay Boys and Girls Club. We're here tonight to offer some insight into the Haftell project and to continue our partnership with the city of Tarpon Springs in the completed project. There was a handout that I do not think was included in your packet, was the lease, actually the 1985 lease agreement. I have copies here.
Just so you can get them to the chief.
This is actually a copy of the original 1985 agreement, settlement agreement that pertains to our project. I'm sorry it wasn't included in the packet. We did share it at our medium, meeting two months ago. So this 40-year agreement between the Boys Club, Rotary Club and the city to utilize the parking for the ball field worked just fine for years. Part of that agreement gave the city a 40 by 100-foot parcel of land along the first baseline at Rotary Park and the building through direct conveyance to the city from the Rotary Club in 1985. The Boys Club retained ownership of the lot and allowed the city to utilize the lot for parking at the ball field. Please note that the city is responsible for the maintenance of that parking lot. That obligation for maintenance runs with the land. That's a term that's actually in that lease agreement. And it was explained to me that our attorney, the city attorney, might need to give further clarification. But it runs with the land according to the agreement signed in 1985. The question now becomes what is maintenance in light of the beautification project, which needs irrigation, some weed killing and grass cutting along the way? The timing of this restatement is related to the merger of the two Boys and Girls Club entities into the Greater Tampa Bay Boys and Girls Club. That's why I invited Freddie here today. To be fair, it is our position that the city should take care of the maintenance obligation that includes irrigation, weed killing and grass mowing. Now, just a little history on our benefactor, Harold Haftell. Harold was a longtime resident, successful business and landowner and a lifelong rotarian in Tarpon Springs. One of his final gestures to the city occurred in April of 2017, where he sold his property just east of the cemetery to the city for $249,000, well below market value and just below the limit to force referendum. This was negotiated by the Board of Commissioners and his attorney, Mr. Herb Elliott. Mr. Banther actually was on the board at that time and thanked Mr. Elliott at a Rotary Club meeting for the generous offer. The city property is now worth 1.22 million dollars, according to public tax rolls, which, by the way, I did check. That was shared with me from Herb. I didn't believe it, but apparently it is worth 1.22. The parcel ID number, I have it. I don't know if you're interested in pulling it up or not. Mr. Haftell passed away shortly thereafter and left $25,000 to the Rotary Club to be used for a community project befitting of his generous spirit. The original bike trail project proved to be too costly and was scrapped. And that was a relationship with the county that was going to fund water being delivered out to the bike trail. It's going to be $325,000. So we scrapped that project. A second idea was developed around beautifying the sea of asphalt next to the Boys and Girls Club and adjacent to Rotary Park Youth Baseball Field. This property is actually owned by the Boys and Girls Club and leased by arrangement to the city for use of parking for the ball field or other events as previously discussed. So this project, we met with city engineers last summer prior to the plans being drawn up to make sure the scope of the project did not exceed expected cost. $25,000 from the estate of Harold Haftell. And we assumed the additional cost of $25,000 to be raised by consortium from Boys and Girls Club, the Rotary Club and private donors. Plans were drawn up and bids went out for the parking lot islands, landscape design and irrigation. Once contractors were secured, permits were applied for and approved and the work commenced. The parking lot contractor immediately ran into trouble when they discovered 12 to 18 inches of cement concrete below the asphalt. Who knew? Not surprisingly, costs went up. Tapping of reclaimed water also incurred unexpected costs of $10,000 as well, which was absorbed by the Boys and Girls Club. Our $50,000 beautification project was now well over budget and we needed to compete, we needed to complete the funding, which of course was my job, to find the additional support. So I went back to the Rotary Club Board, Milton, with basically my hands out saying, I'm sorry, but we need more money. And we also went to the Boys and Girls Club Board and I asked Freddie, I said, Freddie, I need some more money. And we also went to some private donors as well to get the project completed. You wonder why I'm coming to ask you this after the fact. Well, our intention was to complete this project without asking for additional support from the city. But tonight, my ask is that you ratify the restated lease agreement, which you found in your packet, that again includes maintenance and becomes public record. This lease agreement continues the partnership with the city, the Rotary Club of Tarpon Springs and the Greater Tampa Bay Boys and Girls Club. Further, we are requesting from the city $15,000 to help balance the cost overruns of this beautification project that directly benefits the city and its commitment to green space that all residents can enjoy. So I'd like to entertain questions. I have my two colleagues up here with me as well.
I have no questions. Before we go. Before we go into that, I'd like the city attorney to address an issue.
Mayor, as we discussed before the meeting, you're an active member of the Rotary Club. I did some research on this issue to make sure to see if you had a voting conflict. You don't have a voting conflict by the Attorney General, although there was an opinion that said that you may have the appearance of impropriety and therefore may want to not vote. The choice is yours. At the end of the day, for this situation, there's not a specific voting conflict. We just want to avoid any accusation.
I'm going to, I'm not going to recuse myself. I, it's not, I don't have a legal right. I don't, I am not going to gain anything from this. I am a Rotarian, but I'm first and foremost a commissioner. So I'm going to go ahead, and I can be fair in deliberating on this item. So I will not recuse myself. Okay, so let's go to Commissioner questions. Commissioner Banther, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yes, so your total ask is $15,000?
Yes, sir.
And is the project complete, correct? That this is to help reimburse?
Yes, it was. And again, my apologies for not coming to you first, but my intent was to raise the money with the help of these guys behind me first and some private donors, so I didn't have to come to you. This is why I'm coming to you.
I think the work looks great. I think it's a very reasonable ask, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Just for point of disclosure, I am a former Rotary member, former, and I also was a former board member of the Boys and Girls Club for years and chairman for several years as well. But I am not a member of either organization, and I would agree with the mayor. There's no financial gain to me. I just feel that the project is a beautiful project. It has upgraded that whole area, it's upgraded the park. It looks much, much better. And I thank you for what you've done. And I stand ready to fulfill that agreement. I remember when that was a city recreation building, as well as a Rotary building. I've been around long enough to have the history. Sometimes it's good to have guys like me up here, because I remember all of those things. And I just commend the Boys and Girls Club and Rotary for what they've done over the years with the club. And I'd love to see it continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes. How much is the cost of the reclaimed water bill each month? And that's just for the parking lot watering, right?
Yeah, so the Boys and Girls Club have contracted. They'll be paying that bill. It is part of the maintenance. Our argument is it's part of the maintenance. But I have no idea what that number is. Mandy? Yeah, I think we've had the bill for one month. I think we've had it for one month. But it's, you know, the bigger cost was the hookup into the main water line. And that's something we can address in the future, but that's not for tonight. And I'm guessing it's probably $30 bucks.
This reclaimed water bill just came up because of the improvement from the parking lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In terms of maintenance, if I could address that with you, Mr. Cuyas, the original agreement was for maintenance. Obviously, maintenance of a parking lot is different than maintenance of islands that have growing things. And so that's that irrigation that came in. That's why we're asking for that to be included in the maintenance agreement.
Okay. I'm just concerned about what that could be each month. But as we talked about before, I didn't mind giving you at least $7,500 towards a contribution. But if the board moves towards that 15K, what it's looking like, then I'm absolutely going to support it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Oh, my.
This is just questions, and we'll go back after we make a motion.
I hear you. Why was there no contractor overseeing what was being done as it was being done?
It's a great question. As you know, I'm a Rotary member. I'm the project coordinator. I kind of found that by default. I'm not a contractor. I was the guy at hand. And we hired contractors with each of these positions that I loosely supervised.
Right, but you hired subcontractors?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So whenever you, you know, this is the job that I get, because I have a Realtor, a temporary helper, a CPA.
Helper?
You know, temporary helper.
He's not day labor.
Day labor, thank you. Sorry if I've insulted you.
Employment agency.
Employment, yes, okay. We need a little levity in this. And I don't want to negate my chiropractor to my left. But as you and I spoke, and I just have to be perfectly honest, every part of the job that was done was not done either with the city's approval and nor was it done correctly and had to be redone. Some of it had to be redone by the city. So I wanted to be known that when, you know, somebody was given a choice of whether you do curbs sitting on top of asphalt or whether you bury it with rebar. They took the cheaper method and just put it on top of asphalt. And they did it in an 18-feet distance on banana. It had to be removed by the city. The city didn't turn around and, you know, charge you for that. We just took care of it. We redid the sidewalk and we removed the curb. I was getting plenty of complaints from residents about they couldn't get down the street. So some of your cost overruns were the fact that things were not done correctly. Again, going back to having an experienced contractor or an experienced architect who makes sure that you have all of the i's dotted and t's crossed. I know we spoke about some of the, that the city approved this all. I did go in to do research through the city manager, through the permit department. None of what was put on banana was prior shown or approved. I know that the plumbing, the plumbing for the reclaimed water was originally, it was attached to the 1.5-inch and then had to be moved to the 2-inches where you wound up spending more money. So my issue that I have is, if we did something wrong with any which way, shape, and form, I would be readily available to try to cover for what the city did. What I'm troubled with is the fact that we were not informed of these things. Things were done, in my eyes, as a contractor, retired contractor, haphazardly, without any checking on the city. And the whole reason we have a permit department is because subcontractors will do whatever they want to get out of the job, get paid, and they're gone. I was part of the Rotary Club when Harold, you know, I met Harold. I was a friend of Harold's, and I know what this project was. I know there was issues with you trying to find a project that was worthy of him. But you have to be very careful. I mean, you could be coming back to us where it's $50,000 over or $75,000 over. I know you're only asking for a certain amount. I just don't know what responsibility, and nobody's been able to explain to me what responsibility the city has or has, you know, what we did incorrectly. I'm not disputing the original contract that we have. I mean, I just got to read it in a few minutes. I don't really know what parts of it we're supposed to be responsible for or not. I just find it hard to, you know, if the board decides to go ahead with it, which it sounds like they will, that's one thing. I don't see that we're responsible for any part of a...
Is this a question, or you ask some questions?
Well, I'm asking him to determine why there is a need.
Do you want to answer that question?
I actually would like to answer. You actually made six points that I need to address, each one of them. And so if now, Mayor, is this the appropriate time? Are you going to have Commissioner comments to? I'm happy to answer those questions.
Go ahead and answer the questions.
First of all, Mike, I acknowledge the conversation with you. And there were some mistakes made along the way. But I'm going to address each one of them with you, okay? First of all, the curbing that was put on banana, that was not in the original plans. It never was. The contractor made the decision to do that, all right? When it was done, there could have been a way to make it work, because that curbing on the road lined up with the curbing just south. And you can see it from the pictures that you had on your packet. It lines up, okay? So no, it was not a part of the plans. So you are correct. It wasn't a part of those plans. The plans were permitted by the city. So I take issue with you saying that we didn't get permission. We got permission with every step of the way. The plans did not show curbing with rebar, that cost for a DOT project, which, again, I acknowledge that if we were doing a DOT project, we would have to follow that code for a new project. This is a beautification project with curbs that may not have been ideal, but it probably saved us, I don't know, another $50,000 of fundraising that we'd have to do. So that's the curb issue. The water issue, I found out today, was our contractor actually called the city to put it in a different spot, so it was not put in the original plans, okay? So I acknowledge that. I pulled out both of those from our discussion with the city manager two months ago when we first met about that. In fact, in my prepared comments, I'm not asking for anything because the city made any mistakes. I'm asking for a partnership going forward. That's why I'm here with you today. So I'm not asking any of you are placing blame. We don't need to litigate that. Like I said, you and I spoke for over 30 minutes that evening, whenever that was, and you voiced all of those same concerns with me, okay? So I did my research and looked into all of those concerns. And you're right, all right? But this was a beautification project that we were trying to make this corner something both beautiful for the city and to commemorate a dear friend to the Tarpon Springs community in Harold Haftell.
Let's go to...
I can comment, Mayor, when it's appropriate.
Yeah, let's do this. Let's go to public comment. We'll come back, get a motion, and then we can have more conversation. And you can even ask more questions if you want. So is there any public comment regarding this item? Any Rotarians want to get up and talk? Can you all line up if you want to speak? So we can be efficient in time.
I'm Dr. Clifford Brock. I'm at 512 Austin Drive. And I don't know about curbs. And I don't know about blacktop. But I think you have an important issue that you consider as you look at this $15,000. I think probably the asphalt's going to stay in place whether it's approved or not. There's going to be a parking lot. For me, the human element is the more important element. And I think there are two important things that I just will remind all of you who have more time in Tarpon Springs than I do. When I came here almost 12 years ago, the Boys and Girls Club was not what it is today. It was maybe in some disarray. I didn't think it was particularly clean. I didn't think it was particularly well-run. In the ensuing years, the people who staffed that club and served those kids have really brought that organization along. And it serves lots and lots of kids. A former, I'm a retired educator, have a very keen interest in young people. And that club serves those kids. Secondly, that Boys and Girls Club is more than a home for the young people. The Boys and Girls Club has hosted the Sleep in Heavenly Peace. That organization built beds for little kids who have never in their life had a bed to sleep on. We do the cornhole tournament. It's a fundraiser, brings families in for an afternoon of entertainment. The Boys and Girls Club serves many functions, and that beautification, the parking lot, and all that goes with that is part and parcel of a corner of Tarpon Springs that I think is very, very important and goes beyond just beautification. It really is a point of pride in our community. And I hope the commissioners will see fit to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Any other comments? Austin?
There are no online comments.
Okay. So let's come back to the board. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item 14, Discussion and Direction on Rotary Club Request for Boys and Girls Club Parking Lot.
So move for the $15,000.
I can make a statement, then make the motion if I can. I think there should be...
You've got to make a motion first before you...
I'll make the motion.
Make the motion.
I think there's...
He can make the motion, it's fine.
Commissioner Banther?
Can I answer the questions?
We can still ask questions after. Let's get a motion, and then we can...
Commissioner Banther did make a motion.
You made a motion. Do we have a second?
But if Frank has something specific he wants to say about the motion, I do want to hear it.
Well, what I think needs to happen here prior to the motion, that's why I wanted to do it that way, is simply it's time that we look at that again and dot some i's and cross some t's. That's all. It's called communication, and I think it should be updated. That's number one. I'm asking our attorney to get with maybe Herb, or if he still wants to donate his time, and let's refine this a little bit. That's a suggestion. The motion is to pass and authorize this allotment of $15,000.
And I can second that.
And motions are made. Are you seconding the motion?
Commissioner Banther seconded.
You'll be okay. Well, I will motion to approve this item for the amount of $15,000. That's the lease and the...
The approval. This includes the renewal of the lease...
Yes.
And the $15,000.
Correct, yes, sir.
Of course, there's something else. Commissioner Cuyas?
You good?
No, well, there's the water bill, too. I don't know if that's, we're leaving that out.
I think that's part of, is that...
Well, there are four different items. Because you named two of them, I just want to make sure we're either going to approve it all or...
Could I help with this, if I can clarify? So this new lease is a restatement of the agreement. The restatement has maintenance requirement. So it would require the city to maintain that parking lot.
I'm aware of that, but I don't know that the city is... I just want to bring the bodies together.
I just want to make sure that that was in the lease. So the request is just for the money and approving the lease. And of course, it's up to you guys to discuss about the maintenance, which, again, we view that as the grass irrigation and weeding of the beds, like you would take care of any other park.
And city attorney, you will, before we actually sign that lease, you're going to review it?
I reviewed it.
You reviewed it?
Yeah. And it says exactly what they said. It's a restatement, which has a provision in that the maintenance belongs to the city.
Which includes the water that...
And the city. And it goes back to the original language, and it runs with the land based on that original agreement.
Okay. So we had a motion, we have a second. So let's go to Commissioner comments, and you can ask more questions if you like. Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you. I feel like some of the comments were a little discouraging tonight. I just want to acknowledge that the Rotarians, which I was Rotarian in this club from, I think, 2010 to just about two years ago, when I have, you know, too much work on my plate at the moment as well, way back in the day. And I think, Frank, you and I were on the board together a little bit over at the Boys and Girls Club back in like '07, '08. But these are some of the finest volunteers here. But these are some of the finest volunteers here. We have the Tobys, the Brocks, the Dads, Rich. We have Milton. You know, these people have given volunteer hours, I would argue probably more than anybody on this board, with the exception of like maybe Frank. And, you know, what they've done in that corridor there, to not just the actual club itself, but the beautification. I don't think they should be treated like, you know, they did something wrong in this process. I think Rich clarified all those points well. They're simply asking for a, for a, for a, for a partnership here. And this club services some of the poorest members of our community. So I think, you know, we should have kind of a more unified front on this board. I'm in support of this and an acknowledgement of all the volunteer hours. Thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
And follow to that, I know for a fact that the city has done some work on the parking lot. For example, when I was mayor, they repaved it. And I know that the same thing is true with the basketball court. And I know that over the years, since I got here in 1976, that the city has done what it could to maintain that building, because they used that building. Harmon Burris, if you remember him, donated, I believe, $100,000 plus to start off the Boys and Girls Club when the city and, and Boys and Girls Club made that original document. It provides a service, and again, I thank you for bringing it forward. I just want us to get together on the communication of the document. That's the only purpose there. And the city has a history of, with this organization, so does the Rotary Club. It's been a try-in for as long as I can remember, the three groups working together for kids in this, in this city. So enough said for me.
City Attorney wants to make a comment on something.
Mayor, just to remind, and Commissioner Culias brought it up, there are four issues that are being requested, as you see from the memorandum. And I know we weren't as specific in the motion, but the changing the names on the agreement to the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Tampa Bay Inc. is one. A request for a waiver of payment by the city for, or payment by the city for the reclaimed water bill each month, which is an additional request. A request have the city take over the maintenance and repair and the associated costs for the parking lot, or if we do not perform these duties, to reimburse the Boys and Girls Club for maintenance, which was part of the original agreement. And then a $15,000 request. So just want to make sure that, on the motion, that everyone understands what the four issues are.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Culias?
The only thing I'm stuck on is this reclaimed water bill each month. And I'd like to at least have it reviewed. I don't know if it's going to be $200 or $600 a month. And then that's, you know, it's a lot of money if it goes up on the higher end. And so I just at least maybe have this board come back to review that in a year?
That's fair. I amend the motion to that. As it relates to the reclaimed water specifically, correct, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
I can amend that motion.
All right, we're good. Are you, do we have a second on the amendment? Frank?
Yeah, sir. I, we're already out there with reclaim water doing Rotary Field. I mean, it's, it's just adding a little bit more to it. Mostly asphalt, anyway.
That's a reasonable question. Anything else, Commissioner?
No, that's it.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, so here's my issue that I have. I heard what Commissioner Banther said. I also know every single person that's up here. I've been the Rotarian of the Year for the club. I've been the Rotarian of the Year for the district. So nobody is more Rotary-minded than me. You may think that, that, you know, I've been doing this for many, many years. And if I have to make my decision as a Rotarian, I'm in agreement with everybody up here. But that's not what I'm here for. I'm here as a representative of the city. Do we, and the question I want to ask is, do we pay anybody's reclaimed water bill in the city?
We, we, even we pay. So one fund pays another fund.
But do we pay anybody's reclaimed water bill in the city?
No, we cannot by code.
Okay. So here we are discussing paying the water bill when it's not even legal for us to do that. So that's one thing I want to do. I want to speak about.
Can I address that?
Well, let me just say my other comment, please, Rich. The other issue that I have is I have to get more detailed. Because none of those curbs were done with rebar or sunken in below the asphalt. Any car that runs into them, it's going to crack. Who is responsible down the road? I know everybody likes to say, let's pay for it, and it'll be beautiful. But I am a realist, and I know for a fact, and I've done the research, they're going to crack, they're going to break, they're going to fall apart. They were not done right. They were done the inexpensive way. They were not done with rebar. They were not dug down below the asphalt. Asphalt had to be poured up to it. Whenever you do any sort of curbing, that is the issue. You have to dig everything out, you pack everything down, you put your curbing in with rebar to hold it together, and then you put your asphalt up against it. That wasn't done. So are we supposed to, as a city, be married to this where if somebody drives into it, which is going to happen, either from the parking lot side or the street side? Who is responsible for that, is the question.
Okay, so first of all, the curbing, the curbing's around the islands, and there may be somebody run into it down the road, that's acknowledged. It is the city's responsibility for maintenance. That's in the agreement. That's in the previous agreement. That's in this agreement. Okay? That's, it's, it's, it's the city's responsibility regardless. That's-
I know, Rich, but we've had no curbing there whatsoever.
Right.
And now curbing is put, it going in, going out, down the streets. I mean, the curbing's everywhere.
Right.
And truthfully, as I've said to you before, it's all done incorrectly. It should be done with rebar and recessed.
Yeah.
So, you know, again, I'm going to say I have a strong idea of what contracting is supposed to be.
Right.
And I don't want the city to be responsible, if the rest of the board wants to be responsible, about this falling apart, which it's going to do. And then that's their decision. It will not be my decision.
I understand.
I just feel, you know, and I, and I want to repeat what you said. I wish I was still a Rotarian and being, you know, an overseer to this project, it wouldn't have gone down like that.
I understand. And you weren't available, so that was my job to oversee it. What I can tell you is that the city didn't pay anything for that curb. The city didn't raise a dollar for any of this project. I'm coming to you after the fact because of the cost overruns. Had we done the rebar, I guarantee you it would have cost us about 50 grand more than what the cost was, which means more time on my behalf going and shaking down these two guys behind me to do a parking lot that's benefiting the city. It's beautiful. The first thing that you mentioned was the reclaimed water. So, you know, as City Manager said, there's no process to pay that. My argument about that is that the ball field right next door is being irrigated by reclaimed water. You have crews that are maintaining that field right next door that could spend 10 minutes and weed or cut the little bit of grass that's in the new parking area that can be taken care of. Somebody's paying for that reclaimed water to irrigate Rotary Park. I don't know how it's done, but somebody's paying for it. And so the little bit of water that's going to be used to irrigate these islands seems like a drop in the bucket compared to that. But that's why that's in the, in the proposal.
So let me, let me make a comment here. You know, the, the, the parking lot is, is owned by the Boys Club, right?
Right.
And obviously, we use that parking lot for our, all the ball activities that take place. So it's not necessarily, this $15,000 ask is, is asking for a contribution towards those costs that were used to fix that parking lot, right? The cost overruns, yes, sir. Well, cost, I don't care where, I don't, it's, to me, it's fungible, right? It's just water in a bucket. You're asking for a contribution towards that cost, which again, seems reasonable. City Manager, okay, you, you stated that we legally cannot pay for the reclaimed water for them?
For our code, so for our parks, so our parks, our general fund pays the water fund, so we pay ourselves. It's an enterprise fund, so we pay it out of general funds. So we would do that here like we do the ball field next door. We would pay the bill to the water fund from the-
But just to clarify, it's not really paying it, it's just providing the service, in essence.
Well, we're paying the enterprise fund.
No, but you're, we're paying ourselves.
Correct.
Which is just, it's the same way you do the ball parks.
Correct.
Right, as opposed to the request for actually paying their bill, which is not the way you would do it.
It just sounds, it's-
I know, it's, it's just, we're trying to make sure that it's done properly.
So how, what do we need to do on this motion? City Attorney, how would you recommend we clean this motion up?
I would say if that's the intent of the board, that it be included as, as part of the parks for the reclaimed water purposes.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Forget the semantics of words, borrowing, paying, giving. Are we legally allowed to do this?
Yes, we, we can-
I think if you treat it as a park, yeah, the answer's yes.
It's a parking lot to a park.
Okay, we're good.
We're good? We all good?
And we're gonna, it's gonna come back within a year to see what this prices-
And that's part of the, he accepted that as part of the amendment? I have another question. You have one more comment?
Just wondering, on your, is it possible, get an extended warranty from your contractor on the curbing work?
Great question.
Or you should have at least a year, right?
Yeah, yeah, so I have a relationship with the contractor, and if there was something that broke on it, as Mr. Eisner pointed out, I'm sure I could get him back to fix it. So I will give you my warranty that if there's a broken curb in the first year, I will make sure I get the contractor, because they owe me a little bit. All right? So that's yes, in case. I'm sorry to drone on, but that's yes.
So that provision obviously isn't in the agreement that we have. I would ask that if you approve it with that amendment, we will draft up language that we'll read regarding that.
That warranty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I think that's one of the issues that the board wants to make sure, that we're not getting into something-
So do we have to restate this motion?
Want me to revise the motion again, or what shall I do?
Yeah, start off. Yes, Commissioner.
How about, listen, you have the law degree. Why don't you state the motion, and I will-
That's a lot of, yeah. I would do, I would do the motion to approve the request concerning the four items, subject to an addendum to the agreement, which will state that the city will not be responsible for the first 12 months for any problem with the curb. Secondly, that the city will also bring back the cost for the reclaimed water in 12 months to determine whether they will continue to provide that service. With those two conditions-
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. If there's no further comments, let's go to roll call.
I can hear you. Are you going to read it back, or you want?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to item number 15, Discussion and Direction on Increasing Fines for Parking Violations at the Boat Ramps. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Eisner?
Just when I have to bring up an agenda item, everybody's leaving. What is this? Hi, Joan, you can stay. Okay. So we have a situation that every weekend, I'm making a call to the police chief because I get residents calling me up, especially this past weekend. It was just, I didn't even know if I could put a word on it, but it was just confusion at its best. So we have a situation where I believe, is it a $25 summons? And my joke goes back to when I used to visit the Bronx Zoo as a kid, the feeding of the lions was $25. When my kids were born, I realized I can afford to feed the lions because the fine was only $25. So my point with that humor is, it's a point where the $25, nobody really wants to go buy a pass. People will park anywhere, they don't really care if you write them a $25 summons. It's worth it for their day that they're burning hundreds of dollars' worth of gas out there on the water. They've got beer, they've got food, they've got everything. So I kind of did some research into fines in Florida for parking, and I kind of leaning towards, and I'm looking for input from the board on their opinion and their thought process with this. I was looking at $125, $250 is the kind of fine for not having a boat trailer sticker and parked somewhere in Sunset Beach or in the fruit section. Because we're also, you know, I'm sure everybody's getting the same phone calls as I am. You know, people complaining they don't have a place to put their trailer and boat. But everybody else that's not, does not have a trailer launch permit is parked there. So I want to make sure that it is costly enough for them to second guess and not be parking there. Also, Caldizi, from what I heard, is not allowing jet skis out there, so we're getting a slew of jet skis. I want to thank the police chief. I had to call him twice. There was an early morning person there renting six jet skis to random people, which would all be under our liability should someone get hurt. And then he was, I believe he was chased away, and he came back as soon as the police left and was doing it a second time. So I would like to see the board institute some sort of a more stringent fine. I think the people of Tarpon Springs deserve better than they, that they have to fight. We pay taxes, they pay taxes. They should have the right to have freedom to dock their boats and their trailers. And that's my comment, and I'm looking for input from the rest of the board.
Fisher Banther, do you have any comments on this?
Yes, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Eisner. I walk down there on the weekends. The past two weeks, especially this one, was just an absolute madhouse. I mean, there's, and it's almost all jet skis. And that's fine, you can, all the jet skis you want, but I agree, I think we need to, we need to increase the fines. We should at least mirror what the top end of the surrounding communities do. We have that data. And I really do think, and this is a good thing, it's not a bad thing, I think in the budget season, we might need to discuss some seasonal staffing at the beach, because I mean, it's just a madhouse there. And it's, and it's just a matter of time before something happens. But, I mean, even me, and I'm walking, and I'm big, so I walk slow. And I mean, you have to, I mean, you're like, you're like dodging people and things there. So, I mean, it's, I, I'm in full support of this. And again, I think in the summer budget talks, we need to discuss a seasonal position there. Thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I'm in total agreement. It's long overdue, actually. It is kind of during the summer, kind of tough out there, even if you just want to go take a walk. So yeah, I support increasing of the fines, and I would like to see us endeavor to have a staffing person out there during certain periods of the year. I think that would help. I think the police are doing a fine job, but they can't be everywhere all the time. So if we can help them out a little bit in that manner, I think that would be a good idea.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes, I didn't see any backup numbers on just, you know, what the current fines are, what they could be raised to, but should we take in consideration people with permit or getting a permit as well, increasing it? Or should we just leave that at B? Is that a good price for the year that we have it at?
What do you mean by a permit?
Increase the cost of the permit.
The cost of the permit for boaters?
Well, that would be a different agenda item, you know? One of the things I would be looking to do, I know you jumped the gun with this, I wanted to get this passed. And one of the other things I wanted to do was increase the, the permit, but not, but to also give the employees of Tarpon that work for us the same costs as a resident.
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah, I got to go by there, and I mean, it's, it was the holiday weekend. There's always locals out there barbecuing and stuff. I know it's, it's, you know, there's a lot of traffic, but the goal is to, even when there's not those holiday weekends, that we're not seeing this excess launching from over there. So this weekend was an exception about how crazy it can be, but we obviously see that locals, you know, are going there more than ever and other people. So yeah, let's, let's increase it.
So I'm also in agreement. I think increasing it, I don't mind you going with your $125 number. I think that's a good incentive. You had 25, really-
I said 150.
I think you said 125 to 150.
No, I said 25. It was 25. I want to go to 150.
Oh, to go to 150, oh. I'm good with-
Well, we can do 125 to 150.
No, no, I thought, I thought you said 125 to 150. I'm good with 150.
Commissioner Culias has, he's got it on it. He recorded-
150 is a good statement.
Yeah, I think it's a good, I think it's a good number. So let's, let's go to public comment on this. Any public comment here?
Wenson, once again, 327 Madison Lane, I have a question, we once spoke about trailers, the length of the trailer and the width of the trailer and what's allowed and what's not allowed, because as I walked down through the Fruit Bowl area, there was one trailer and its truck parked it actually on Spring Boulevard, not, or Spring, whatever that is, and not even in the Fruit Bowl streets like pineapple and banana, so I'm just wondering, not only should we increase the permit, but how do we explain to people or communicate with people what size trailers are allowed?
Thank you. Any other public comments? Oh Lori.
Lori Weaver, 917 South Florida Avenue. So building on what Susan was speaking about, I own a property in the Fruit Bowl, among some others, and there's times when those boat trailers are blocking driveways and I'm sure you're all aware of that. I just wanted to make sure that it's going to be comprehensive, whatever Vice Mayor Eisner has proposed, which I think is a great idea, but it's going to be comprehensive enough to cover that Fruit Bowl area as well.
Yeah, well, I think it's a great first step in what Commissioner Eisner, I mean, Vice Mayor Eisner has proposed, so.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Austin?
There's no online comments.
Thank you. So let's entertain a motion, Vice Mayor, you want to make that motion?
Sure, so it would be a violation to not have a trailer, boat trailer sticker, and I think the violation should be $150, but what we also need to do with this is to have signs there, so.
Mayor?
The chief has a concern.
I think we have to do the... I was just gonna say, Mayor, this is an ordinance that we have, we're gonna have to amend the ordinance. So 1812... Why don't we do that? Is fines established, so we're gonna have to bring this back to you for consideration. Why don't we direct staff to go ahead and draft up the ordinance and bring it back to us so we have it at the next...
Technicalities, technicalities.
Can I make a recommendation, sir? Are you okay with that?
I'm okay, but I also do want to bring up that we should have signs there, because I don't want this to be a surprise, you know, we should do this, you know, of course.
We always educate first after we make changes like that, but if I can make a offer, if we're gonna look at this ordinance and we're gonna go in there, not just looking at the one line for those things, we're gonna do a comprehensive review of the whole ordinance and update all the fines to bring them in order into categories, there are some that are statutorily driven, you know, you have handicap parking, that's a statutorily driven, one parking in front of a fire hydrant, that's statutorily. So we can go in here and change these and bring forth a better defined numbers to get it and we'll do the review of the counties and the other cities in our area and then work with the city attorney on drafting an amendment to the ordinance to present to y'all with those numbers. And to answer the question regarding the Fruit Bowl, back then Assistant Chief Reggio did bring the width of the ordinance forward, we went through two different attorneys at that point, I don't know where it landed, so we'll have to, I'll work with Attorney Salzman, that should be in the 50-foot stack of papers that he got from the other attorney groups, so we were just waiting on that. Do you want to make it? Because we have to look at 1814, which is the parking of large vehicles and trailers and residential, so we can bring everything back comprehensive and then all the issues that you've brought up, I believe we have the direction to move forward to bring it back.
So then my motion is just for the, to move...
Vice Mayor, you don't need a motion.
Then I don't need a motion.
I think we have consensus unless the board feels differently.
Then it was a nice discussion, thank you all for your time and...
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good stuff. Okay, it's Vice Mayor again.
Yes.
On number 16, discussion and direction on instituting parking fees for non-residents at Sunset Beach.
So we had, in addition, we had, it wasn't, as other commissioners had said, there's been, it was a madhouse at Sunset Beach. It was just, you know, we have a situation where both Sunset Beach and Fred Howard Park were flooded during Hurricane Helene, I don't see that Fred Howard Park is moving ahead, fixing their bathrooms and their facilities, everything is porta podes and they're charging $6 for that gracious use and we are charging nothing for having bathrooms that are repaired. I know they want to lift them and I don't know where they're getting the money from, I've heard no movement, but bottom line is, we should have a fee, not for our residents, but for our non-residents that are utilizing not only Sunset Beach, but also the Splash Park. These are things that I would like to see the board change our policy to have it similar to what we have at the Decanese, where you put a sticker in your window, I did do some research, so Indian Rocks charges 250 per hour, Half Moon Beach charges $10 per day, Sand Key Beach, $6 per day, Tiger Tail, $10 per day or $1.50 per hour, St. Pete Beach is $1 to $1.50 per hour. Clearwater is 350 an hour, Fort Myers is $5 an hour, Treasure Island, $5 an hour, Palm Beach, $7 per hour, Cocoa Beach, $4 per hour, and Jacksonville, $15 flat.
Was there a Fort DeSoto, was there one for that beach as well?
It wasn't on my, yeah, so, I mean, I don't know, I just was gonna do some, just to give us some ideas and some guidance on how we could change hours. I mean, and I'm open to suggestions, whether you want to do a flat rate or do you want to do an hourly rate, but we have to get some control. The people that called me over the weekend were just telling me there was nowhere to park, they were parking down, you know, the off streets and having to walk like, like what we have on the Sunset Beach concerts, so.
Commissioner Banther, do you have any comments on this?
I'm in support of this, at least I'm pretty sure, I would not be in support of any fees for any residents, but I don't think that that's what's being proposed, because I was, you know, I still detest that our friends in, you know, over in Down County want to charge Tarpon residents to park at Fred Howard Beach, I think that's absolutely insulting and ridiculous.
I agree.
So as long as we're only talking about non-residents, I'm good with that, as long as we keep it within the middle range of our surrounding communities.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Oh, I would concur with that, I would suggest a flat fee however, instead of an hourly fee, because that, to me, is, how are you gonna police that, is my only question with it, but as long as the committee works that out and brings it back to us, I'm fine with that process.
Commissioner Culias?
I mean, I have some concerns with charging people to come to Sunset Beach, so it's the problem, I mean, we're talking about last weekend, it's a holiday weekend, but, you know, I want people to come visit the town and it's gotta be cheap, as you see those city-owned beaches are charging much less than those county-owned beaches and that's where I'm going at it, as Commissioner Banther said, and Mayor, I would ask with the consensus of this board, there was some communication, I'd been going back and forth with the county about giving parking to Tarpon Springs residents for free at Howard Beach and the Causeway, if you can ask Trish to just pull that information up and, needs to come from you now, you're the mayor, as we have this consensus, try to work with them a little bit, they come up with these reasons about their county-owned park and, you know, I explain to them, well, your county-owned parks aren't in the heart of residential neighborhoods like ours is, they're just not, you know, our youth and our everyday people are not enjoying it and like they should, because they gotta pay five, six bucks a time and we're already paying for it if you ask me, so I think this board collectively supports you to just carry that communication, that dialogue forward to help them look just for Tarpon Springs residents and, and I'm gonna go one step further, I was told there was some, you know, thought of the park, the county went off of the park back to the city at some point for a fractional amount, I don't know if that was true or not, but I'm interested in getting that park back, they're neglecting it like no other, I mean, they got porta potties going on for eight, nine months, you know, it's, why don't we buy it and take care of it ourselves, we can make it a money, can be a moneymaker for the whole community and we can make it work really good, so, I mean, I know it's, came out of nowhere on the agenda item, but we're talking about it all and something to consider, so, thank you.
I wish you, we had had this before this morning, because I had coffee with Brian Scott, could have asked him that.
He's really good, he's a good friend at Tarpon Springs.
Yeah, yeah, and so is Dave Edgar's.
Yes.
So. How should we proceed on this? Do you just, do you want to just kind of...
Was the consensus to bring back a proposal or an ordinance that would establish parking fees for the beach for non-residents?
Yeah, and then we also want to, I mean, it's a side item, but it's to follow up with the county on...
Sure, we'll provide, I'll provide you with that email history.
Yeah.
Question.
Is that okay, Mayor? All right. Thank you again, Vice Mayor. So, is there any public comment on this item? I didn't ask, but, is there, Austin?
There are no online comments.
Nice. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the agenda items, let's go to board and staff comments. Fire chief? That's an inside joke, I actually accidentally called him Fire Chief at the Memorial Day.
No comments, I did too, to be honest.
City attorney?
No comments, Mayor.
City manager?
I just mentioned I'm gonna be at the city county manager conference for the remainder of the week, I'll be over in Orlando, so I'll be available easily if you need me.
Thank you. Our assistant city clerk? And let's go to Commissioner Banther?
I just want to thank, I guess it was the Elks, the FW and police, fire and city staff for a great, I mean, yesterday was extremely hot, I feel bad for our men and women in their, in their color guard uniform, but they all did a great job. And I just want to thank the board for a very well-run meeting tonight and for those of us that watched our workshop, I think that went very well as well. I am out of the country next week with my daughters and my wife for a little cruise, so I wish you all well and I will trust your management of the city while I'm gone.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I too would like to thank the Elks and the Legion as well as the city for their presentation, I do want to comment though to the Fire, I mean, Police Chief, that our major needs to speak into the microphone a little more, so, but it went really well, I'm encouraged by the numbers that turn out and, and Mayor, I have a solution for you with the two chiefs, I think we should buy one of them a toupee and we'll go...
I can tell my partner. Commissioner Culias?
Every once in a while when I would introduce their names and I'd get the, you know, fire, I'd go to say their first name and I'd say the other ones and it completely messed me up for the speech, but, so I get it, no, just thank you for everyone in Tarpon Springs for honoring and remembering those for Memorial Day, you know, just it was a great weekend to be thankful for the freedom we have to be out and enjoy everything. We got budget season's coming up, we're taking care of some items, the board's gelling, we're doing good, so just wishing everybody the best and thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor?
So I want to, I'm gonna use Commissioner DiDonato's line, everything's been said, I, I just want Commissioner Banther to understand that, yes, I will have, take care of things while you're gone, have no fear. I love that line. It was a very nice turnout and yes, I don't know if they need toupees, but we do need to put them on different hats at least, so. And you should also write down who you're going to be speaking about before your, your speech, but anyway. Thank you, listen, I'm here to abuse as well, I do think that that workshop that we had was excellent, I think the board is, as Commissioner Culias was saying, was, is gelled and working together, I like the differences of opinion and even the sarcastic comments that come my way, I love them too. I do want to make one comment that I know we have a specific person who wishes to come and preach out of a Bible every week and I know he has his First Amendment right to do that, I would just, as our rules of procedure dictate, I do not wish to be called out to be told that I'm using a potty break or anything like that, that's not necessary for him to make any comments, I've already sent a letter out to him once and I will be sending out another letter to follow up. If he wants to do what he wants to do, that's his prerogative, but I will do what I want to do and that's my prerogative, but this board has to be addressed either to the mayor or to the board, not Mike is to, is going for his potty break, I thought that was ignorant and immature. So with that, I wish everybody a good week and if you see people messing around at Sunset Beach, feel free to call me, because that's what everyone does anyway.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I want to thank the commission for their patience with me, you know, I'm, you know, it's, it's a much tougher job, you didn't, you didn't warn me about how tough this is, because, you know, it's, you're, you know, you're, you're trying to keep the meeting going, you're also trying to, you're looking ahead a little bit and then you're also trying to participate in the conversation, so you're trying to absorb everything everybody's saying, to try to stay, you know, I, sometimes I forget, wait a minute, is there a motion? Not a motion, I can't remember, I'm going to hear and hear, so again, I really appreciate all your patience with me and I'm trying, I'm trying to get better. So the, we, something we didn't discuss at our rules meeting, which is honoring people, there's two people that I'd like to honor and I just, I just want to, I mean, I could put you guys on the spot and say, does anybody oppose this, because I don't think anybody would. I'd like to do a special honor for, and I don't want to wait for people to always have to pass away before we honor them, you know, I'd rather honor people while we can. And, you know, one of their, that was kind of mentioned tonight, you know, Mary Burris and Naomi Patterson have been, you know, angels in Tarpon Springs, you know, they, you know, they funded Mary's husband, Herman and Mary, she, they were married, you know, and they funded the Boys Club, they also founded the Shepherd Center, they've, they're just, they've been tireless workers in, in very low-profile things, you know, they've never asked for a thing, they're, they're, like I say, they're, you know, we have angels in America, they're, they're those angels, those ones always stepping up, so unless anybody has opposition, I'm going to do something to honor them next, at the, either the next meeting or the next one after that, Naomi's not in the best of health right now and I want to do it while we can, so I hope everybody's okay with that.
That's great.
So with that, with that said, the meeting is adjourned at 8:30. So, do you guys want to take any kind of...
I'm good to go.
No potty breaks. Do you need one, Mayor? Do you need a break?
It's a good thing I got thick skin, no? Our diocese is good to go over here.
Anybody want to take a break? No?
If you need a break, we have five minutes if you need...
Do you want to do five?
We'll do one for you.
I don't need a break.
I'm good.
All right, run it.
No, I'm good.
Run it, let's run it.
I don't know if anybody else, okay, so. The, I'd like to call to order the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting for downtown Tarpon Springs redevelopment area, Tuesday, May 27, 2025. Roll call. Here? Here? Here?
Here?
Here?
Okay, let's go to the agenda items, we have agenda item number one, award file, request for proposal, branding and marketing professional services, this is the follow-up to what was on the general agenda. City manager?
This is just the companion requests for the personally paid out of the CRA fund.
Is there any, is there any questions of the city manager on this item? Okay, any public comments? Austin?
There are no comments online.
Okay, if there's no further comments, go to roll call. I mean, you have roll call, please. We have, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, see, I told you guys have, you have to have a lot of patience. Okay, Commissioner Banther made the motion. Okay, Commissioner Banther made the motion, second?
Second.
Okay, now let's go to roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. DiDonato?
Yes.
Coolas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Eisner?
Yeah.
Yes. Item number two, award sidewalk improvement program. A city manager?
Yeah, this is also the companion piece for the segments that are on Tarpon Avenue within the CRA.
Are there any questions of the city manager on this item? Any public comments? Austin?
There are no online comments.
Thank you. Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. If there's no comments, further comments, roll call, please.
Mr. Ban?
Yes.
Mr. DiDonato?
Yes.
Coolas?
Yes.
Yes. Item number three, Tarpon Avenue bump-out removal, additional parking. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that was on the books before I came, and I just wanted to bring it back to you, just to come, so you are aware, what, before we start tearing them out, what's going on, just kind of reassurance that you're still good with this. This will create a few more parking spaces in the downtown.
Clarify where these spots are again.
So there's a little, do you have a map in your presentation? Not good at presentation.
As the final item of the evening, I have a 47-slide presentation.
No, you did not.
Please go over each one.
We'll jump right to the chase here. Thanks to Tony for preparing the slides here, but the location here is the corner of Tarpon, just west of Ring, you're facing south here. So you can see this whole area here was going to get removed, except for one piece, so we can have the site triangle that we've retained. You see this here? This is what it's going to look like after the work is done. So we're going to gain five spots here, and then there's an additional fifth spot further down on Tarpon Avenue, right here, this bump-out's going to get removed, and a parking spot we put in. So we're gaining a total of five spots. All the work is going to be done in-house, under operational budget, and Tony tells me he can get it done in two or three days or your money back.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so let me, let me start the questioning. The, what about, oh, go back, go back.
Yes, sir.
What about the one far to the right, why isn't that getting punched out?
I don't think that one gives us enough space for parking, but also we want to keep the sightlines for, on the cross streets.
Okay.
So cars can sometimes, you know, if you've ever left Ring, and you got the parking by the bank, sometimes you just can't see because the sightline hasn't been retained there, so we want to be conscious of that.
Okay. Commissioner Banther, do you have any questions?
No, but this is, this is great, thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No.
Commissioner Coolas?
This is great. Please be on the lookout for taking more bump-outs like this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I'm for this. The only issue that I have is whenever you do things like this, you know, I sit on the MPO for Ford Pinellas, and they're leaning towards putting more of these things in, slow the traffic down. And now we're taking it out, which speeds up the traffic. So I'm concerned that we don't create, you know, we create a more parking spots, but we create other hazards. So I'm for it because I do want the parking, and that's why I'm glad in a way that you're leaving that little triangle, because otherwise, you know, that'd be a second street for people to go buzzing down when somebody's standing there waiting to make a left, so.
Understood. Chief, you got any comments on the, don't think it's a problem? Okay. Let's go to public comments. Anybody have a public comment on this? Austin?
There is one public comment. I'll unmute them now. Please state your name and your address for record.
Good evening. Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. This is really a great idea. It's been longcoming and needed. I have to say that when we did, years ago, we did some, all this work, where we put all these boulevards out, it's come to be in the state. So yes, it's good to pull those out, but I also, as Commissioner Coolas mentioned, you should look at some other areas. The main area that I think would need to have those removed is the corner of MLK and Pinellas or Alternate 19. There's one on the northwest corner that if you remove that, you could create a right turn lane. Also on the same side over by the southeast corner, that one could be removed, and the other two could also be looked at being removed. But this would actually increase your flow of traffic at that light since there is no dedicated left turn going eastbound to go from MLK to Pinellas. So that whole intersection needs to be looked at, and I would also implore you to talk with the county about changing the light structure there. So when the left turn lane light comes on going westbound on MLK, there's a corresponding left turn lane for the eastbound MLK. That would help increase your traffic flow, and also timings for during the day when school is in effect, because sometimes you'll get buses backed up all the way past Banana because there's not enough time for those buses to cross Alt 19. So I would say look at that intersection for maybe increased traffic flow and removing some of those bulb out. Thank you for your time.
Okay, all right, any, Austin, any more?
There are no other public comments.
Okay, so let's come back to the board. I'd like to have a motion.
So moved.
Second. Okay, so just, I'm definitely in favor of this. Like, like Commissioner Coolas said, come back with some more. Okay. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Mr. DiDonato?
Yes.
Coolas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Eisner?
Yes.
Yes. That includes, concludes the agenda items. Any board or staff comments? Chief? No comments. Any city manager? Our deputy city clerk? Any other commissioners want to say anything? Okay, then the CRA meeting is adjourned at 8:39.